Okay, work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues formally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to discussions, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meeting held twice monthly. In the first 10 minutes, we're going to have Board communication. Have we heard from Commissioner Quayle yet?
No, we have not.
Okay, so he may be coming here later, I guess. So, I don't know why I'm not on there. I'm on the visual here, but I don't see it on there. So would anyone like to start with the Board communication today?
I guess.
Okay, Commissioner Webb?
Yes. I could report on, I feel as if I've been on, notice that I don't have earrings on, but otherwise, I look better than I have for a very long time, which is a testament to the fact that I've been on Zoom calls since 10 o'clock this morning. And one of them is a reflection on our conference call with the Governor earlier this week, I guess it was on Monday. And I thought AOC actually didn't do a terribly good job of taking, putting our questions together to make sense out of it. So there was a lot of just, they went by district, by AOC district. And so there were a lot of different kinds of questions, as always happens when we get a bunch of county commissioners together. But one of the things that I was particularly struck by, I kind of went through to kind of see what the general trend was in terms of, and I wish Commissioner Quayle were on now because we, I talked with him. There he is, there he is, there he is. Okay, so after the call, when AOC sent us all the questions, et cetera, I was struck by how many mentions there were about giving hospitals the opportunity to do elective surgeries. And everybody on this call is completely familiar with the dire straits that most of our rural hospitals are in. And so it occurs to me that, now, one of the answers to the questions was that the Governor's Medical Advisory Panel is working on recommendations for elective surgeries. However, in the Governor's presentation, which was sent on, there was no mention of this. This wasn't one of the groups that she talked about, I guess she called them sector, well, economic sectors. And there was nothing about hospitals in it. And I'm wondering, Commissioner Quayle, have you had a chance to run down some of this stuff?
I did, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I did have a chance to talk to the CEO this morning. And the Hospital Association had sent a letter just after our conversation with the Governor. And it outlined a number of steps that they were willing to take in order to get elective surgeries and urgent care back online. And she had responded, just I think this morning, in agreement with hospitals taking those steps. And I know that from the CEO of a hospital, he was satisfied. He felt that these were reasonable marks that hospitals can take on and achieve in a satisfactory amount of time. So there was progress on that. And I do appreciate Commissioner Webb reaching out to me yesterday to kind of give me a little charge too, to follow up on. So, good news.
Yeah, that's great. So there's going to be, what, some action coming from the Governor, we hope?
So she agreed to the steps that hospitals could take in order to restart elective surgeries. So that was the action, I believe, that was taken. And I don't have the specifics, I know that from the standpoint of a rural hospital, seemed reasonable.
Great, great, good. So, I just think that's a huge win for us. You know, I mean, I think we're very lucky to have two such, the average rural county does not have the wonderful hospital infrastructure that we do. But it just seems crazy to me not to be able to put these folks back in business. It really does. I worry about the non-COVID medical issues in our community that aren't being addressed. So, anyway, that's great news. Thanks, Mark.
Okay, we are, you know, it's tricky with this electronic meeting. We are now at 10 after, almost 10 after. So would anyone like to quickly contribute to community, I mean Commissioner, communication before we move on?
Commissioner, Chair Sullivan, if I could just mention, there was a meeting this afternoon that AOC convened of Regional Solutions and the State Parks Director, because that's another piece of our well-being, our economic well-being, that will impact everything else. The hospitals have to be ready to deal with a surge of cases, they have to have adequate PPE, they have to be able to do the trace contacting before we can get parks, state parks, local parks, national parks, all opened up. Because when those happen to be opened on the North Coast, we're going to see another surge. And so, ready for that. And if we don't get them open, then our economy falts. So trying to balance those competing vectors is an ongoing challenge. I understand we'll be on a meeting tomorrow to talk about that.
I'm having, I didn't hear anything that Commissioner Thompson just said, I'm sorry.
What I heard Commissioner Thompson saying is that it's a fine balance between, you know, our economies depend on the income of people coming to use our state parks, but at the same time, we have to be mindful of our medical system that's fragile. And so how do we balance the two? And AOC had a meeting today, I think that Commissioner Thompson, you said that you attended, is that correct?
I did.
I was on that meeting, I was on that meeting too. And I think-
And also, I wanted to let you know that tomorrow, our County Manager, Don Boone, and myself will be on another meeting with the State Parklands and Jennifer Bressel, correct, Don?
Yes.
And this will be including Columbia County, Lincoln County, Tillamook County, and Clatzen County. I think from all the different, and you all are on the same meetings, a lot of the meetings that I'm on, the refrain that I'm hearing is that we all need to coordinate this. We all want to open as soon as we can, but we don't want to open until it's safe. And whenever that happens, it has to be in a coordinated manner.
Well, there were some pretty important takeaways from the meeting this afternoon with the State Parks Director. And one of them was that, I mean, there were several takeaways. I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I had my notes-
I'm sorry, Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Webb?
Yes.
I understand that there probably are, but let's move on to the other, because I think this is the topic that's going to be ongoing. And if we could go down to, continue on our agenda, so we can, we have two topics that I'd like to, and maybe some of those can be brought up during that time. But first of all, let's, if you don't mind, so let's go down, we've got a few minutes here to discuss formatting the agendas. Does anybody have any comments on the agenda? Commissioner Quayle, do you have any comments on the agenda?
I think that we had talked about moving the, and I don't have it in front of me here, the item on fairgrounds, to take it off the consent calendar, is that what you're asking? And have a general-
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep, yep, I would move that we would do that, at least request that we would do that, to have a little more discussion about that.
Mr. Quayle, Chair Sullivan, that would be consent, item seven, would be pulled off of the consent agenda.
Okay, so I think all we need to do is to make note of that, and to give us a little more information about what to expect going forward concerning contracts for the fair. So with that, does anyone else have any other comments about the agenda? Thank you, Commissioner Quayle.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move into the topic. The first topic today is Public Health Update. We have about 15 minutes for that.
Okay. Hi Commissioners, this is Mike McNichol, Clatzen County Public Health Director. So as of this minute, we still only have six confirmed cases. Four of those folks have completely recovered, and the other two are convalescing, so that's the good news. We have had some activity. We do have, you know, a couple of cases reported that they were in Pacific County, so they have their first two cases, which is interesting now that it's come this far south in Washington. Our staff is still busily operating the PIC, or the Public Information Center. They're still receiving a number of phone calls. And now it's, you know, first of all, there's more questions about COVID itself. Now we're moving into questions about when are we going to reopen? And that seems to be down the forefront of everybody's minds. The other things we're working on is we're still working with CMH and Providence on PPE, medical surge, and those kind of things. Although right now, we're sort of in a wait-and-see mode, depends on how things happen after it's reopened. And the other important thing is we're working with Providence and CMH on trying to get folks who are, as they're patients of theirs, who may be houseless or homeless, how we can get them housed temporarily in a hotel. So, because these folks have some pretty serious underlying health conditions, that if they were to be exposed to COVID, that the outcome would be pretty poor. So we're working on that process. And right now, really, you know, we're still trying to, at the same time, maintain our other things we do in public health. But we're still, I'm waiting to see, like everybody else, I'm curious how we're going to do this. So, you know, we don't, I am one of those who think that if we open too soon and aren't careful, we will have a second surge that we'll have to then maybe think about doing this again. I just hope that we're careful and that we take everything, you know, do it slowly, and make sure that the science drives the decision-making. But I'm willing to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. McNichol?
I actually-
Please, go ahead.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Well, you know, here's the push from some people in the economy that say, open up. But if our health system doesn't have the capacity to deal with what you and I are both afraid of, which is a second wave of surge, what do we do? Do you have advice for that? What can we tell people that's compelling about saving their lives when their economy is failing?
Yeah, you know, that's the dilemma, isn't it? It's a conundrum wrapped around a dilemma. So the issue is, you know, from a public health perspective, you know, we have to focus on the community health. And part of that is actually the economic health, because that drives mental health and spiritual health and other health aspects. So I think what we need to do is make sure that the message that we send, as we do these openings, that we have other messages about, you know, social distancing is still the key. You know, if you are going to go to the beach with your family or whatever, make sure you stay away from crowds. Proper hygiene is going to be absolutely necessary. And maybe we do take the CDC's recommendation to have people masked up before they go out and enjoy the new freedoms that they're finding. You know, the difficult ones are going to be the bars and restaurants. You know, once those open, social distancing is nearly impossible. So, you know, there's going to have to be some really strong messages with the operators and owners of those about, you know, if you have sick employees, they still shouldn't come to work. You know, those folks in the back, you know, the back of the house staff and the front of the house staff need to mask up, proper hygiene, you know, because all those things are going to really be important if we're going to try to still keep the curve flattening. But it's going to be a big challenge, I got to say.
Don, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Well, I was just going to, off of Mike's comments, is just summarize a little bit about that one-page slide that I sent you about the Governor's reopening framework. You know, this is the topic that everyone is talking about right now. And the mayors are getting together tonight, and they're talking about it. And so I spoke with Astoria, and they're going to give me an update tomorrow on what the mayors talk about. But, you know, we're still in the gating and the preparedness part of this chart that I sent you yesterday, and which means that we won't even start the first phase, I don't believe, for a number of weeks. And so, you know, and then the first phase is kind of sticking your toe in. And so, you know, I just think everyone needs to be practical about the kind of a pace and the kind of changes that they might see. It's not going to be as quick as some people would hope, but I think that falls into the prudency category. Because there are issues of capacity to test and some other things that need to continually expand for us to really open it up. And I agree with Mike, just from a public health perspective, you know, slow is the way that it's going to have to go. One of the decisions that the county and the cities are going to have to make, and it's one of the topics that the mayors will be talking about, is what is the trigger for them to revisit each of their emergency orders-
Did the screen change? Do you just see this, or do you still see the videos?
And in some of our views, we believe, you know, opening up hotels would require the Governor to allow nonessential travel. And so, to the point where nonessential travel is not recommended, we think it's hard to kind of open up some of the communities to some of those assets that would be a draw from outside of the community. And so, in the Governor's initial framework, nonessential travel would not be unlimited until Phase Two. And so that could argue that the county and the cities may not want to entertain opening up the hotels and the camping until Phase Two, and some would maybe even argue Phase Three. So I think those are the tough decisions that folks are going to have to be considering. And kind of my two senses is that as we have been going through our COVID response in the mitigation side, our whole thing has been, let us get through that as a community and not encourage others to join us in that, because that complicates our work trying to actually mitigate the disease here or the virus here. And I think that that has to continue through at least the first phase, because we have to figure out how well we can manage opening up the economy in a really stepped way. And so, the kind of insulated box that we're in right now needs to stay the same insulated box as we go into Phase One. Because we need to see how well we can do this within our own community. And then, as we get into Phase Two and Phase Three, then that opens up the opportunity for some of these other things. But, you know, my caution is that we don't invite decisions that would encourage people to come visit until we can figure out how well it works inside of the box, which means inside of our community. So I think there's going to be a balancing act there. I'm glad the mayors are talking about it tonight, because it is something that we all need to be coordinated on. Because I can't imagine one community opening up to hotels and camping and others not. I mean, that would not be good. So anyhow, like everything pandemic, we're going to learn as we go. So, but that's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions. And I did update that chart that I sent you, and I will send it back this evening. It's just been cleaned up a little bit. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you, County Manager. I have a request for everyone. I have sent a text, there's some people that are listening online, are having difficulty hearing, so I'm asking everyone to please mute their part of it unless they're talking. Okay? Does anyone have any further comments? I have one question, Don.
Sure.
Excuse me, Commissioner, Chair Sullivan?
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that. If I mute it entirely, then I cannot hear others.
Do you see that microphone up there in the corner?
Oh, I see, let's see.
And if you make that red, that'll mute you. And then you just touch it again when you want to talk. Can you hear me now? Can you just nod?
I haven't found the place yet. Okay, so where am I looking?
I think Commissioner Thompson's saying, mine is on the top, and it may be on yours on the bottom.
Bottom.
You see on the border, there's like a little gear, and then there's a people, and then there's a memo, and then there's a video, and then there's a microphone.
So towards the bottom, I think, Commissioner, there's a little green microphone?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. The question I had, Don, was, the county has, and maybe this is for Joanna also, the county has, we're going to be discussing about the emergency, continuing the emergency declaration. And because we are concerned with community health countywide, in what ways does our emergency declaration interact with the city declaration? Can they do something, they can't do anything outside of our declaration, right? Can you explain that a little bit better, a little bit more, or again?
Joanna, would you like me to take that, or would you like to take that?
Well, maybe if I do a terrible job, you can try to correct me.
Okay, that's great.
All right, so we have the, what's called police powers for the area outside of incorporated cities. Our emergency order will be the prevailing order if a city has not passed an emergency order, emergency, well, emergency order. So I believe all of the cities within Clatzen County have passed an emergency order. So then the question would be, if they've passed an emergency order that is more restrictive than the county's emergency order, and in that case, the cities, incorporated cities, their order would prevail. So it really depends where you're at. But generally, I think you've all done a really good job to coordinate with the cities and try to ensure that the same message is put out there. And so when you're passing this new amended order, it is for the same places that you were regulating before, you're just extending the timeframe, I believe, until, in May.
Yeah, May 31st.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that's helpful. So if we don't have any more comments on that for this work session, let's move on to Monica with fiscal year third quarter financials, if we could. Monica?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Monica Steele, Assistant County Manager. And so I'm just going to go through the third quarter financials. And so this goes through March 31st. So this kind of is at the end of, the beginning of the pandemic. So we kind of got hit with everything in the middle of March. And so there isn't a whole lot of information in here that is a result of COVID at this point in time, because that happened right at the end of the third quarter. So with that being said, I'll figure out how to move my slides, manage more than one thing at a time. Okay, so currently, all of our funds and expenditures remain generally in line with the budgeted expectations. Staff is continuing to monitor those areas where additional costs are being incurred. And we're working with those departments that are either going to need to realize some savings or reviewing for necessary budget adjustments. At the end of the third quarter, we were 97% collected of our property taxes for the amount that was budgeted. This slide here is representative of all of the funds, revenue funds, not including transfers, that have been collected. So we budgeted 52 million, and at this point in time, we've received approximately 42.8 million. And again, this excludes the beginning balances and the transfer amounts. And so we are approximately 82% of what was budgeted is what we have collected to this point in time. And this slide is representative of just the general fund, same sort of thing. We budgeted 21.3 million, and to date, we have collected approximately 18.5. And so we are 87% collected. For this slide, our general fund major revenues include those property taxes, which, as I said at the beginning, were 97% collected. We have collected the 2.18 for the timber revenues that remains in the general fund. And so per the long-term financial plan, everything beyond that 15-year low goes to special projects. And so at this point in time, we're 81% collected in the special projects fund. Once, if we exceed that amount in regards to receiving that 1.9 that was budgeted in special projects, the remaining amount will go towards the general fund stabilization. This slide represents the payroll costs through the third quarter. As you can see, we are above what we were last year, but that's because of the increase in FTE. We had approximately 9.2 additional FTE in the current fiscal year that was budgeted over last fiscal year. And so at this point in time, we paid out approximately 12.5 million in payroll costs, which is 70% of the budgeted amount in the general fund. So we are coming in about 1.3 million over the prior fiscal year. This slide is representative of all the org units within the general fund and where they're at. So you can see the county tourism fund, which is above the 75% mark, which is where it would typically be at this point in time, is because of the one-time payments that the Board approved for those tourism promotion grant funds, as were distributed in late January or February. And so everything else that will come out of there now will be within the budgeted amount. There's some payroll costs for the staff person that oversees the collection of those tourism dollars. So there will be a little bit more there, but we won't be exceeding the budgeted amount. Also, in regards to dues and special assessments, same sort of thing. We have some one-time payments that come out of there. And then the transfers will only be up to the amount that is budgeted. And so anything beyond that that we receive in revenues, such as the timber revenues, would just roll into the beginning balance for next year. This is for the Public Health Department. At this point in time, a lot of these are below the 50% mark. And some of that is because there were items that were budgeted, but we have not received the revenues in order to pay for those budgeted things. There were perhaps some grants that we were hoping to receive that didn't get received. And so we're working with the Health Department to try and make sure that we are going to come in without being in a deficit. And that may require some support from the general fund for this fiscal year. There are some programs that are- fund for this fiscal year. There are some programs that are significantly below, such as the household hazard sweep, and that is because that took a little bit longer for us to get that opened up than what we had originally hoped. But as you all know, we are up and running now. In regards to the emergency preparedness, this is one that is helping with the pandemic. So, again, this all kind of hit at the end of March. And so, there will be some costs associated with this program that we will have to do a budget adjustment for. And this is the road department. So, again, the road district is pretty much the funding mechanism for the road maintenance and construction as well as road admin support. So, anything that we receive in revenues beyond the budgeted transfer amount will roll into next year's beginning balance. The equipment replacement fund, they are planning to make some purchases. They've had to do some adjustments in regards to pieces of equipment that they had budgeted for. They are going to extend the life on because some other things have come in a little bit more expensive, or they had ordered pieces of equipment, but in light of events prior to the pandemic, they were already delayed on getting them, and now they're even more delayed. So, there will be expenditures, but within the budgeted amount. They're just kind of shifting how they're going to be purchasing them. And these are all the other org units within the county. As you can see, they're all within the 75%, and several of them are significantly below that amount, and that is, again, because of the contingencies. And I would just like to kind of point to the fact that they have these contingencies are really vital in times such as this. Some of these departments, such as building codes, have significant contingencies, but they are also going to be taking a hit right now in regards to the economic situation and not as many people perhaps building things right now or planning to build things in the near future. And so, being able to sustain the levels that we have and not relying on the fact that we don't have revenue streams coming in is really vital to just the continuity of our operations. And so, by having these contingencies, we're able to continue to keep our people working. Now is a good time. Several of them are working on things that they just haven't been able to get caught up on. So, we've been very fortunate in the fact that the board has been very cognizant of these contingencies, so that way we can be in a better financial position to kind of weather these things out. And so, just to kind of summarize, for the most part, everybody's within that 75% margin. Those that are outside of that or those that perhaps don't have the revenues coming in to keep up with their expenditures, we are working closely with them to bring any necessary budget adjustments before the board in the coming months prior to the end of the fiscal year. Some of them might need to reallocate budget authority just from someplace else. Some of them might be coming from contingency, but that will come to you probably late May, early June. Are there any questions?
I do. Thank you, Ms. Steele. I really appreciate all the hard work senior staff do to keep track of all of this. So, it looks like Commissioner Thompson has a question?
Of course. Well, this is probably going to be the gnarliest accounting season you've had for a while. I wonder if you're going to need supplemental staff to track all of the unexpected happenings, the ins and outs and the ups and downs?
So, we, at this point in time, every department within the county, they have their own staff who process the purchase orders and vouchers. And so, what we have directed all of them to do, as well as any purchases that happen with their procurement cards, is they are to keep track of or mark on those purchase orders, any COVID-related items. And then, when that comes into our office, one of my staff has been tracking all of that information in a spreadsheet. So, that way, if there are possibilities for us to be able to get reimbursed for anything, we have that information. Since what is possibly going to be reimbursed is still kind of up in the air, we're kind of tracking everything. And so, there might be things that are directly related to COVID, such as PPE and hand sanitizing lotions or whatever. And then there are some things that might be indirect to COVID or as a result of COVID. So, for instance, having to set up our phone systems or our internet system so that we can have go-to meetings. That's not something that is directly having a life-saving effect because of COVID, but it's something that we have had to make an adjustment for because of COVID. So, we're tracking those costs as well. In addition, like IT had to make some server upgrades to be able to accommodate people who might need to be able to work from home. So, we're tracking that information. And then, in our payroll system, we are also tracking those people in regards to their time. If somebody has to be away from work because of a COVID-related illness, we're tracking that. If somebody is providing support, so we have some departments where maybe things are a little bit slower, so they can help in the phone bank for public health, then they're tracking their time related to COVID as a COVID support system. So, it's an effort by every single employee and every single department, but at this point in time, I think we're tracking it pretty well. It's just going to be a matter of what we can and can't get reimbursed. We did submit, and I received back a notice from them yesterday when I checked in on it, we submitted several purchases that have already been made for reimbursement to save our workers' comp insurance because they are offering reimbursements for COVID-related purchases. And so, we're hoping that we can get some of that. Those purchases have to be specific to protecting our employees from COVID, and so, we have plenty of those costs already. And so, we've submitted that, and now we're just waiting as they wade through hundreds of applications that hoping that we'll get something.
Very good. That sounds amazing, actually. So, good job on that. And if I may ask a follow-up question, we had that email from AOC that they're interested in helping us with. My understanding of, and maybe Commissioner Thompson, help me on this, the expenses and the costs, is that, all of the stuff that you're tracking, does that also help with what AOC is asking for?
Yeah, so I think it was a couple of weeks ago that they sent in the first request of kind of like, what costs have we incurred to date, as well as what potential revenues do we think that we've lost? And so, we did send that information. It was a pretty short timeframe for a turnaround, so we did send that information off to them. And then, this week, they have asked for us to provide them with some information in regards to what costs we think we might be incurring to try and get the economy, to open the economy back up. And so, we sent an email out today just to department heads to kind of say, hey, be thinking about this. What kind of costs you think might be associated with either just kind of the change of practice moving forward, or any costs in regards to opening up the economy, such as with public health, or being able to purchase more testing equipment and stuff like that. So, tomorrow, we have a department head meeting following up with this meeting. And so, I sent that out to them for them to be able to think about it, so we can talk about it tomorrow. And then, hopefully, they can get me that information by Friday morning, so I can get that off to AOC.
Very good. Do they have any comments? Commissioner Thompson, I see your mouth moving, but I'm not hearing you.
I don't know what to do because I'm talking and I'm off mute, so.
I hear you now.
Okay, good. Well, this capillary end of the system thing is more than a notion. So, what I understand is that the CARES money is going to come into the state from the federal government. The concern is that it will be held in the metropolitan counties.
There's 13 watching.
And that the state will be keeping all the rest that would normally go to the rural counties. So, I called our congressional delegation and made the plea that we get our own money directly, that it not go to the state.
Probably Tom.
Because with all due respect to the state, we're their agents, but we are not their subordinates. We spend our lives understanding what our communities need and scrambling for resources to meet those needs. So, all of the congressional staffers heard that. I don't know what impact there will be. I heard from AOC Director Nickel this afternoon that Congressman Walden's, maybe if anyone has relationship with people who have an impact on Senator Walden, that would be useful because the phrase was, this has turned into a political football in Washington. All we know is that we are definitely going to need supplemental funds, and we hope to get those. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And, Don, it's my understanding that the staff has also been talking to the powers that be about making sure that we get the funding that we need, because we all understand that we're going to need federal support funding to do our best. Is that right? Don, I'm not hearing you.
I'm sorry, I had my mute button on. I was being good, and then I forgot about it. So, there are ongoing conversations at really every level about advocacy and education regarding county issues, city issues. And so, that is taking place. But then it gets into that very political world, and we'll see what time brings us. But, you know, right now, the CARES money is going into the metropolitan counties. And I agree with Commissioner Thompson, certainly rural counties need to have some of that money come directly to us as well.
Oh, I would agree. I just know that there's power in speaking as a whole board in addition to just speaking individually. So, I would like, when possible, that we can use the power of the entire board to ask for some of these things when it would be appropriate.
Yes, and we will keep an eye on those opportunities and hopefully have enough lead time so we can do that for you, so.
And I know things are happening really, really fast, every single day, everything's something new. But, so, thank you very much on this presentation on the budget, the quarterly budget. And I see Commissioner Webb has something to say. And I'm going to call on you next, Commissioner Webb, but I would like to, if we can, have a little bit of time between this meeting and our evening meeting in case anybody needs a break, because I think everybody's probably been on meetings all day long. So, Commissioner Webb?
This has to do with, once again, the worksheet, the big matrix that AOC provided us with. They are pretty specific in here about the fact that there will be $1.388 billion for the state and other local governments. And they even give the criteria for what reimbursements would look like. Is there any, and I thought the governor referred to this in our Monday meeting with her. So, I'm a little confused. Is there, does somebody think that there's some kind of jeopardy that the state will keep all this money? I can't imagine that happening. Maybe that's a question for Don, or?
Well, so, go ahead, Don.
No, you go ahead, Monica. That's fine.
I was just going to say, at this point in time, the CARES Act money is specific for counties with populations of over 500,000. There have been, you know, some of that CARES money, some other, for instance, the Sunset Transportation District, they were able to benefit from receiving some of those CARES money, but from a different mechanism. I don't know if that, the transportation has a different way of distributing those money, but for the counties specifically, we don't need the population basis to receive, to apply for those directly.
No, no, no. I think this is awfully important for us to be really, really clear about this. That is not what the AOC handout says. I mean, it says that, you know, in addition, that the tri-county, the Portland area will receive $247 million, and that there will, this leaves roughly $1.388 billion for the state and other local governments to access. So, you know, and that's in the law. I mean, that's what the law is saying.
Point is, the state.
Commissioner Thompson?
Point is, sorry.
I can't hear you, Commissioner Thompson.
I'm sorry. I don't know what. I'll eat my computer. All right. The point is that the state is more inclined to keep control of those monies, Commissioner Webb.
Well, and I think, I think that there are, there's two different things, too, is that there has been, there's been, we will reconcile what has already been allocated, Commissioner Webb, and we will ground that. But there is talk about a fourth stimulus that would fund more for the local governments, and that would include lost revenue and also direct expenses related to our current COVID response and then the future needs. And so, we will ground what's already been allocated with the reconciliation with what AOC has. But we're also looking forward to that fourth stimulus bill that might actually be more of a direct payment to the counties and to other local governments. So, we'll see how that plays out through the legislative process.
Commissioner Webb, are you saying something?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, does anyone else have any more comments for this work session before we take a small break?
Regularly, it is now 6:02. The Board of Commissioners is the governing body of Clatsop County. All county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board, is now meeting in regular session. Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Teresa, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Clea?
Here.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, we were talking about removing Item 7, PD County, sorry, Country Enterprises from the consent agenda to the business agenda. And that would make it, what, Item 13? Is that it, on the business agenda? Are we just removing it from the agenda entirely? I'm not clear.
No, it would be Item 13. That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, with that change, Madam Chair, I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Okay, all those in favor, second it. Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposing the change in the agenda? Okay, hearing none, the agenda has been approved. Now, let's go to the business from the public. Are there any comments that were sent in from the public? Okay, thank you. May I, do I need to do a motion to approve the consent calendar? Yes, I do, don't I? May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, we'll adopt this consent calendar.
Okay, do I have a second? Yes, Commissioner Webb, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent Yes, Commissioner Webb, thank you. Um, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Do we do a roll call on this or not? We just do the general consensus? Okay, all those, any, any opposing the consent calendar? Okay, hearing none, uh, the consent calendar has been approved. Let's move to the Commissioners Liaison Reports. Uh, who would like to begin tonight? Okay, Commissioner Nebiker, thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, you're welcome, Chair Sullivan. Um, you know, I, I had a at-length conversation with Kevin Leahy, and, um, was very informative about what our small businesses are facing. And I've, I've been getting a lot of calls from small businesses, and with, of course, their concerns. So I wanted to be as informed as possible with as much information at hand. And I did, I did call, uh, a couple of them back after I had time. And I have to say that what, even though the things that I said were not what they wanted to hear, uh, it was based on, on what we know to be fact, and they were grateful to know that. And I think that this confusion about, um, well, from the top down, it is causing problems because there's misinformation, and there's fits and starts, and then there's a change of mind, and it's, it's all over the place, and it's confusing to people. And I think people who have businesses, you know, they need to plan. And even if they don't have, uh, the money in front of them, uh, to know what they can get and what isn't reality for them makes a big difference. Because it, it helps lessen their anxiety. That's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Did you have another comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, Commissioner Thompson, would you like to go next?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Well, um, looking for the rational middle ground is always the challenge. I really appreciate the county manager's recurring iteration, has two key phrases with which he reassures me. One is, "That concern will be part of our strategic planning," which I'm grateful. The second part is, "If we do coordinated muscle movement at all levels of government with the governor's plan, we'll be okay." And so I, I hold to those, like, right and left arms as I go forward. Because as Commissioner Nebiker said, people want to know that their concerns are heard. They would rather have the answer they want, but more than anything, they want their concerns heard. And we certainly cure the concerns not only for the health and safety of everybody, but for the economic vitality going forward of our region. And so we'll make the best decisions we can as long as we have the, the confidence that we have the medical capacity to care for what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I just want to, um, remind people to please mute themselves unless they're talking, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing comments. Are people able to mute themselves? Okay, thank you, uh. David, is that you?
Okay, you know, veggies on it. Okay, you want, you like cabbage?
I will get it addressed.
He's getting it to go.
Would he like to share? That's what I'd like to know. Okay. Commissioner Quayle, would you like to go next? Or should we wait till the order is complete?
Oh, I could talk over the order. Actually, I, I do appreciate, uh, the, the county's approach. This is scary for a lot of people, and, uh,
I feel they do.
And I think that we're doing the right thing by working in concert with the rest of the counties, the, the state, um, and, and certainly in, in coordination with our county health department and the hospitals. Um, I do want folks to be aware, I know that folks aren't receiving their unemployment benefits. They filed six, seven weeks ago and, and yet to get payments in a lot of cases. Um, and this is causing a lot of, of the pressure that we hear about folks wanting to, to get back to work and open up. Uh, so I know that the red, Warnton, I just talked to the mayor a little bit ago, and Warnton's trying to put a resolution together, uh, to, to demand for unemployment benefits, uh, to be released, um, to, to residents or to, to folks that have applied, uh, a long time ago. So I know that that's part of the issue here, is that folks aren't receiving unemployment. Um, and until they do, um, they're going to be even more restless as time wears on. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Quayle. Uh, Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next, please?
Commissioner Nebiker had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nebiker, I didn't see, I, I don't see, you're not on my little screen. Commissioner Nebiker?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to address something that Mark brought up. Something that, uh, I understand is that, uh, part of the problem, I mean, the unemployment, of course, was, we know, has this antiquated, however many decades old system, but they haven't had, uh, enough workforce, but they are increasing their workforce. And maybe you already know this, but they're increasing their workforce, and, and perhaps they will be, uh, up and running, hopefully, before too long. There's certainly people that need the work, so hopefully that's going to happen.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. Yes, I've heard they've tripled their workforce to try to address that. Um, Commissioner Webb? Commissioner Webb?
Um, yeah, I guess, um, I would just like to express my concern, uh, after this phone call today with, um, with the parks and rec people. Um, I was really struck with all these calls, and I think, Commissioner Thompson, you were on the call, too, right? Um, the, I, I, I was very struck. They go, of course, by AOC district. And, um, I was really struck by kind of the differences, uh, in, in the different areas of the state, uh, about feelings of opening up, uh, in recreation areas. And, um, there was only very passing mention of our coastal, of our concerns on the North Coast. Uh, and in fact, it's interesting to me always that the South Coast is, has a very different attitude toward tourism, et cetera, than, than we do in the North Coast. And, um, if there is to be a, I think, was it Commissioner Sullivan? Did you, did you talk about the fact that you and our county manager have a meeting tomorrow about?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, because there was reference today in the meeting that tomorrow there was gonna be a big, uh, call between the Fed, the feds and state agencies, um, and counties, I guess, was the way it was described, uh, about this same issue. Um, so I really hope that if that's the case, um, that, that we have a strong North Coast consensus on, on these issues, because they are really, really different, um, in terms of their feelings. And I know, I mean, I, I was struck by some of the comments we got today on email from people in the tourism industry who encouraged us not to open up, um, for public safety reasons. Uh, so, uh, as I say, I, uh, can, can you clarify a little bit about what this meeting that you all are, are talking about tomorrow?
Well, Don, did you want to take that?
Sure, Commissioner. Um, this is a, a meeting really of the North Coast interests with the governor's office.
Oh, so it's a different meeting then, then?
Yeah, and with state parks. So it's just focusing really on the North Coast so that we can all talk and hopefully get some alignment on how we want to see things move forward.
Okay, and what counties are gonna be included in it?
Um, in my recollection, it is Lincoln, Tillamook, Clatsop, and Columbia Counties. And then there's some cities that are also thrown in, and then the governor's office. And I might be missing another county there, but it's, it's basically Lincoln, Lincoln County up and then over to Columbia.
That's my understanding, too.
Okay, so that's a different meeting then?
Yeah.
Than we were told about today. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. Um, but I just, yeah. Uh, one of the things, too, that happened in this meeting today was a lot of response on the part of the, of the state about how important messaging is. Uh, and I, and I want us to be very conscious about that as well. Um, of being very clear and very kind, et cetera, uh, in terms of our messaging. Um, I was rather astounded at how many counties basically have opened their parks at, at a minimum to day use. And several counties talked about, uh, the fact that they were allowing camping to go on. So, um, so obviously the, the patterns statewide are, are rather different. And, um, because of the bleeding, especially between Clatsop and Tillamook, uh, in terms of, of, of our tourism movements, uh, I think, I think we at a minimum have to be very united with Tillamook about what our expectations are.
And I, I, I think so far we are, every, all, all the, all the words that I have, all the meetings that I have listed in on, there seems to be a very strong intent to remain coordinated, so. And I also have to say, is there any, any other comments on that?
Thank you. I took three pages of notes and sent them over to the county manager so that each county is quoted as much as I could on what they said. And when she and I talked afterward, we agreed that, that we will be united as counties, because I agree with Chair Sullivan, that we do have a common message and a common theme and common concerns. And also what we're looking at is addressing those concerns to the metropolitan areas. Because I said that at the, I think probably, Commissioner Webb, you heard me say that at the end of the meeting to Chair Harrington of Washington County, who assured us that the chairs of Washington, Multnomah, Multnomah, and Clackamas County meet three times a week, and she would be working with them to coordinate their messaging because it's those metro areas that will have the largest impact on our local facilities, one way or the other.
Right.
So, and, and Gina Nickel from AOC is also committed to working on that. So I think both locally with our unity at the coast and with our focus on our colleagues, um, in the metropolitan area who will have such a huge impact on us going forward, I think we are coordinated, but I really appreciate your concern. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's all I have.
All right, uh, well, I, 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 I have to say that I'm proud of, and I know all of you are, too. I, I think Clatsop County, um, has done a good job since, since the very beginning. We've been talking about having consistent and compassionate messaging. And I think that, that we're continuing to do that, so I'm very, I'm very glad about that. Um, and so we've talked about the meeting that I'm gonna be in on, um, tomorrow. See if there's anything else. Got the email from, uh, the Red Cross. I don't know, I think everybody's getting the same messages, but I don't know that. Anyways, they, they had a, the Red Cross talked about if there's fires again, how they will take care of people trying to find non-conjugant shelters for them, using hotels and motels. And, and it just struck me that I just, I really hope that we are, um, are not, that we, that our fire season this year will be, uh, okay, that it won't be catastrophic. Why is, am I talking on the computer? Okay. Um, I thought I was talking on my cellphone, on my, on my home phone. Um, that's ringing right now, I apologize. Um, oh gosh, I'm sorry. But the other thing that I wanted to say today was, today is the, um, 50th anniversary of Earth Day. My youngest sister wasn't even born then. I mean, she's born in May. I was, I was 11 years old. But I just wanted to acknowledge the generations of people around the planet that have worked to keep our planet healthy. And, uh, I just wanted to put that out there, that, to acknowledge that today's Earth Day. So, um, with that, we will move on to the county manager's report. And county manager, you'll need to unmute yourself.
That, look at that, I figured it out. So, uh, Chair Sullivan, members of the board, um, a lot of activity going on. Obviously, besides all of our work, um, with the COVID-19, we are, um, getting the budget process done. Um, we have a strategic plan work session that's been scheduled for June 3rd. Um, and we've been working hard with our PSU folks getting ready for that work session. Uh, so that work is, is continuing, um, and we're, are excited about re-engaging with your board on that process. The other is the social service grant application process has been released. And so, um, those applications are due by 5 o'clock Thursday, April 30th. And then our goal is to come to your board work session, that next work session, and review those with you um, in preparation for your, um, approval, um, of those grants. And then we are evaluating, uh, an opportunity to apply for a CDBG grant, uh, for some, uh, personal protective equipment, um, which we would, if we received the grant, Coal PAC would administer it for us, but we would use those grant resources to help fund PPE for, for daycare centers, for, for, uh, long-term care centers and for our, and for our first responders. So just wanted to let you know that we are, um, pursuing other opportunities also. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Webb, did you have a comment?
I have a question. The date that I had for our strategic planning meeting is June 9th.
Okay, well, that could be, um, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
An outlier here?
Well.
Okay.
It is June 9th, so that's correct. Sorry about that.
And also, may I put a bit in, and maybe this probably wasn't included in the, in the grant, but, um, when I talked to, uh, Tanya DeHart of the Northwest Senior Disability Services, one of her concerns is the foster care system, that there's a lot of, um, adult foster care that are independent businesses, and they're having trouble getting PPE. Um, and I did pass that concern on to the governor. So hopefully they will also be included on that. And then I, uh, if I may go back to my own, uh, announcement, I forgot to say that I, I, I made a video this morning with Tom. Um, it was, uh, it was about a, about trying to encourage people to call 211 if they had concerns and needed referrals for health and social service agencies. Okay, um, consent calendar. All right, let's move on to the business agenda. And at number 12, page 144, to extend emergency declaration related to COVID-19.
All right, are you ready for staff report, here?
Yes, please.
Okay, Chair Sullivan, members of the board, um, on March 16th, uh, your board declared an emergency in response to the COVID-19 virus. Um, and then on March 22nd, uh, you approved an emergency order which, uh, put the restrictions on the hotels, uh, short-term rentals, short-term rentals, and camping, as well as pools and spas. And so right now, we are asking your board to consider extending both the emergency declaration and the order until May 31. Both of these may be rescinded at any time, but we would like to give a little certainty to folks as they are moving forward with their plans. And so syncing up the emergency declaration and the emergency order seems to make sense at this point. So there is a resolution that we are recommending for your approval. And that's the end of the staff report.
County Manager, I just got confused. Is this, the emergency declaration is the one that we initially initially did, and then we added on the one about closing the parks? That's still a separate thing, right?
Yeah, so they are separate. And so we are just syncing up what their actual what their actual dates are, what their sunset dates are. And so they are still separate documents. And so, so what we have is a resolution that basically just that just makes both the order and the declaration both sunset on May 31.
Okay, all right.
And again, they can be amended anytime at your board's discretion.
Okay, and I would like to, first of all, just to put out there that the motion that's in the packet, we would like to add some wording to it, just for whoever is going to make the motion, that the motion, if we choose to make this motion, is "The Board of Commissioners Adopt the Resolution Extending the Emergency Declaration and Order Through May 31, 2020." I think it had that first part left off, so.
And it says, my copy says 1.
Yeah, there was a typo with it, so.
So if we just, going forward, it was just, "The Board of Commissioners Adopt the Resolution Extending the Emergency Declaration and Order Through May 31, 2020." Would anyone like, first of all, does anybody have any questions for the staff? Okay, do I, someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion. To, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution extending the emergency declaration through May 31, 2020.
Declaration and order?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those were the other two words, Commissioner, that were added, so.
I'm sorry, there's a typo on my page that says, my page says, "May 1, 2020."
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I was focused on that. Do you need me to read that again?
Could I, why don't I read, is this what you meant to say? "The Board of Commissioners Adopt the Resolution Extending the Emergency Declaration and Order Through May 31, 2020?"
Yes.
Okay, do we have, Commissioner Thompson seconded that? Thank you. Comments, questions and discussion, please? We have a motion made and seconded, all those in favor, no, wait, let's have a discussion on the motion.
So Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm acutely concerned with our economic vitality. My heart breaks for the businesses, for the employees, for the independent contractors, for everybody who's economically impacted by this. People are incredibly fragile, economically speaking, and that harms our community. On the other hand, we have to keep people alive. And so to the extent that we can do whatever is possible to get unemployment insurance or whatever federal or other monies can be distributed to people, I'm all for that. But in my mind, we have to go forward with extending this order to keep people alive. And that's why I'm supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else like to make comments? Okay, I, I'm not seeing, I'm sorry, who is this?
Nebiker.
Commissioner Nebiker, yes.
I agree with Commissioner Thompson, and I know that there will be there will be people who will be very upset with this decision that we are making tonight. And I I hope that we can communicate with compassion and and facts to those who contact us. This is not a decision that we make lightly, and I know that it it may seem punitive to some, and yet if we don't listen to our medical advisors about what is the best way forward, we'll look back, I think, I believe, without being able to see the future. And we would regret that we would open too soon and relax the standards. And we are like everyone else. We're at a disadvantage because we don't have a crystal ball to see the future. But acting on what we, what the information is that we do have, I believe this is what we must do. Thank you.
And I, Commissioner Quayle, were you going to say something? Okay. I just wanted to agree with both of you. I think we all know that people are struggling with this. It's not, it's not, it's not an easy thing to have people sacrificing and doing this, but I think it's, from everything that I understand, it's the only thing that we can do at this point. So I know that all the powers that be, the community, and working towards getting the funding for the unemployment insurance and the business loans and whatnot, that's about all that we can do. So.
Chair Sullivan? This is Commissioner Nebiker again?
Yes.
And whatever efforts we can make to connect the small businesses with the avenues of funding and to go through, I can't remember, what is that website? Biz, let's see. Littlecenter.org. And also cedar backslash clatsup dot small business. At least that gives them a way to connect, if they haven't already, to see what things are possible for them, and to connect with others who are in the same situation. I think we need to make sure we get that information out there individually. And I believe the county is already doing that, but I know I'm getting a lot of calls, and I would guess that you are, too. So giving them that information may help.
I think so. And I know that on the 3 o'clock call, Mayor Jones and Mayor Ballensefer were talking about the meeting that they're going to have on Thursday, April 30, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., talking to business owners. And I think Kevin Leahy is going to be involved in that also. So we can just do what we can to support people until we get some better news about this virus, so. Any other comments? Okay, let's call, we have a motion on the floor. The Board of Commissioners, we move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution extending the emergency declaration and order through May 31, 2020. May we have the roll call, please, on that? Or the call?
Aye.
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 You need to unmute.
Yeah, I thought I had it all. Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes unanimously, 5 to 0, and that will extend the emergency declaration order through May 31, 2020. Thank you very much, everyone. Now let's move on to number 13, which was brought down from the consent calendar concerning, it was from page 42, the PD Country Enterprises Incorporated contract. And Commissioner Quayle and I had talked about that earlier. My concern was this is a long-term, this is a contract for, well, let's have the staff talk about it. Don, would you like to address that? Or Joanne, I don't know who's caring?
I think John Lewis might be on. John, are you on?
Yes, I am here.
Sorry, John. Yes, John, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, so anyway, as far as this contract goes, it goes just like the rest of our contracts for Fair. We spend about $195,000 put on Fair. And all of our contracts have the force majeure so that if an act of God, tornado, hurricane, anything like that happens out of our control or out of the entertainer's control, neither party is held liable. And so the reason we're continuing on with this, I mean, we don't have a lot of hope that Fair will happen, but it does take several months to put this together. And it only takes me about four hours to cancel the whole thing. But, and that's all the fair, it took me about four hours of phone calls to get everything shut down. But it takes about six months to build this thing up. So if some miracle should happen, and we were able to have Fair, I don't want to be standing here and not be able to do a thing about it when it's a whole lot easier to cancel it than it is to put it on.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. So, and I appreciate you staying in order to be able to do this tonight. Does anybody have any questions for John?
I do. This is Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Nebiker?
Hi, John. So does this also cover pandemics? Because I know some definitions of acts of God doesn't include pandemic.
Yes, it actually does. And they made sure that we knew that when we went into this because obviously they're still putting other contracts together around the country. And they know very well that some of these are going to happen, and some of them are not going to happen. They just, they don't know, and so they write this in there for that. And it does cover pandemics.
Thank you.
If I might add, if you listen to page 54 and section 10, it actually has a section that specifically calls out epidemics. And it does say that performance of the contract will be excused. So it's pretty specific to epidemics, and so we feel comfortable that this would protect the county in the case that, in fact, we won't have, be able to have that, the fair and have a concert.
And so, Joanne, does that, all the work that John and his staff are doing to put this fair, get things in line in case we can have the fair, that would apply for any of those major contracts that they're working on, correct? Not just this one?
I've only looked at this contract, but yes, force majeure is a pretty standard provision that the county will have in all of its contracts. And yes, it would include epidemics.
And I'll just throw in, the rest of the contracts we use are our county contracts. This is the only one, because of the size of the entertainment that we end up using theirs. Everything else is run through ours.
And I'll just say in advance, I know how much excitement there was in being able to work with Josh Turner. I hope that, I hope that maybe something will happen, and it'll be a good turnout. But it won't just be this, I'm thinking about the 4-H kids. Anyway, we'll just hope for the best. But I appreciate the clarification on this.
Absolutely. Happy to be here.
And thanks for all your hard work on it, John.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So the motion, since this is now on the business agenda, in case you don't have it in front of you, it's on page 42. And the motion that recommended motion, action is that I move that the board approve the agreement with PD Country Enterprises Incorporated for a Josh Turner country music performance scheduled on Thursday, July 30 at 8:00 p.m. Do we have anybody that would like to make that motion? Okay, Commissioner Quayle has made that motion, and do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson has seconded that. Any discussion? Okay, let's have the roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so the motion passes that the board will approve the agreement with PD Country Enterprises Incorporated for a Josh Turner country music performance scheduled on Thursday, July 30 at 8:00 p.m. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, moving on to the good of the order, does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Okay, I guess I would like to put a shout out again, and I know maybe I did this before, but I'd like to thank the IT team and Teresa and all that makes this possible, that we can have these virtual meetings. So I just want to say thank you for doing that.
I think Commissioner Nebiker might have had a comment, too. Chair Sullivan?
Thank you. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yes, it's so good to see all your faces. Even though it's virtual, I can't tell you how great it is for me. I have been staying in. And I don't even go to the grocery store, so it's really wonderful to see you all. Thank you.
And I just wanted to throw in, if Mark wanted to have his cute little kids come by, that's okay with me, too.
I just wanted to give a shout out to David Reed and Astoria Warranton Area Chamber of Commerce, and to Kevin Leahy and Cedar and SBDC for all they're doing to try to connect businesses with sources of funding. That's still important right now, so I hope that folks that are in need can reach out to them and feel comfortable doing so.
I know they're, no doubt, are working overtime to help people. Okay, anyone else? All right, very good. Thank you, everyone, and see you next time. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.